And since our clerk is not here, I will call the roll. James Cartman. Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I am here. All right. We have a quorum, I have proof of posting, will you join me for the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, motion to approve the agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes by zero. Do you have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 8?
Sold.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections? Hearing none. James?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Reports, I passed out a very interesting, some very interesting reading that was on, that I saw on the computer, and just peruse through it at your convenience, and I just thought it was really good reading for stuff, so. So all I got, Mark?
Um, everybody, and it's available too on the desk, and I sent this to the new circular, nominated to Wolf Run Association as an organization standing, nomination for standing up for rural Wisconsin. They'll, the nominations are due in September, and they're, would be announced, but my guess is we would be notified if we're under consideration. There is a convention in November that these groups are recognized for, so. Black, well, the Wolf Run Association has just done a wonderful job of enhancing our community, they've been a good partner to our school, and so I've gone ahead and nominated them for their efforts. Also, just wrapped up the annual UW Madison Science Camp, and we are in the second week of summer school, so. Projects are, outdoor projects got delayed a bit today, during, in between the raindrops, but they are proceeding as planned.
So we're not boarding up a wing?
Which wing?
That one.
That one? Those, no, those are just temporary. We're looking forward to the windows coming in July, unfortunately.
Just getting ready for the winter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that was removal, we're, we're not shuttering or expecting a hurricane of sorts.
I had to explain to potential higher years during interview process.
This will be changing.
Difficult students.
We're not going back to the 50s where, where energy efficiency, get rid of the windows, take, take, tire, back in, no, we're not, contrary to anything you read up.
All right. Curriculum committee.
Oh, we've been talking for the last hour and a half. Just a lot of sharing. Just run through what we did, testing updates, we will talk more in August about the actual scores when they come in, talk about Edge Climber, the data program that they're working with, textbook adoptions, how that's going, professional development for this summer, and what they've got going for the next year. Educator effectiveness, professional development and the budget, and how we could fund more professional development, or how to decide what we want, or not what we want, but what the teachers would like to, conferences and things that they would like to go to. And then we talked about classes that are offered here at heights and possible changes, and everybody's thinking a lot right now, put it all together and make it work.
Very involved with me. I feel like I need to go sleep.
All right, I have no fault of him, but district business, end of year administrator reports. Dale?
Well, thank you, another great school year. I did put my notes up there to read, just kind of follow along. Highlights initiatives, another busy school year, really for us at the elementary level, a big focus area was PPISS, we talked about that earlier in the school year, but our committee met throughout the year, we introduced a pilot part of the program here in the month of May. During that pilot, we focused on our hallway behavior, and we had expectations and reported first with the kids during that timeframe, we saw immediate positive results in our, in our hallways, just, it was overnight, and it was a lot of fun to see that. We will be implementing the tier one of PPISS again next school year, we have developed outlines for our major minor behavior interactions, we've developed a reward system, we're creating guidelines for all areas of our school, we're ready, we're looking forward to having PPISS in place next school year, so that is a huge initiative for us. Also this year educator effectiveness, I know the board has heard a lot of conversations about it, at the elementary level, I'd say our staff grew and we adjusted in our first year with the new educator effectiveness system. Just understanding the two parts of the process, knowing when and how to focus on the half of the system, which is based on the instructional piece, and what we're doing in the classroom, the balance in the other half, which is based on student results or our student learning objectives, that's our SOLOs, and the truth, we really have to focus on both at the same time, but working with the TeachGave, they are a little bit separate, which is how focused we got better as the year went along with that. Our teachers learning how to document, their practice organizing their, our results, TeachGave just was all new to us. Overall, our staff did very well with their documentation, reporting directives, and our results in TeachGave. Our students have performed well on a high level, district and state assessments, and we did improve, we did have improved results in the KDA ministry and half scores, so that was all positive, and I think we will be better next year with that. Just ranging off of that, student data, our teachers, and I just wanted to give the board a heads up with this as well, our teachers are expanding their use of student data to group students and to plan their lessons. Our fifth grade team used half scores along with unit pre-post count assessments to group students that are in math class this past year. Now, our first grade teachers, they've been sharing students based on assessments the past couple of years for certain individual math movements. As we move along, this just may become more of a norm at other grade levels and subject areas as we move ahead in the next year with our SOLOs and just how we plan our goals, that sort of thing. So in short, at the elementary level, we make sharing kids between the whole teachers more often, we'll see how that plays out, but we had a lot of conversations about that, just putting together flexible communities and see a benefit with that, so we'll see how that plays out. But we saw some real positives within it, particularly in grade math this year, we've seen some positives with our first graders the last couple of years. Next on the list, the reading language arts and math curriculum, we talked about the adoption, so I'm just going to move on to the technology piece. We introduced and implemented the tablet mobile cards for classrooms, the LearnDads that use maybe, the Axol tablets at Black Earth. Point I wanted to make about that, from the teacher standpoint, teachers reported that it definitely was a learning year for us with the tablets, they are hopeful to increase their use, they're setting up the programs to be user-friendly, and just want to be more consistent with that next year. You know, point there, you know, we made good use of our LearnDads and our Axols, but we have a ways to go with that. We do, there's, there's a lot of teacher crap with it, just getting them set up, just want to make sure that they learn correctly, that sort of thing, so that's work in progress, but it was a start, it was a good start for us to have that. Also, just want to note, you know, our smart boards and computer labs, our mobile laptop cart that we have at Mayso, those obviously extensive use on a daily basis, and we're very productive with those, so. On all technology wise, we're on the right track, we're getting better, we're seeing more of it, just hoping to keep going. Highlight of the year, for me this year, was our literacy night, or our literacy day. February 25th, author Judy Young came to our elementary schools, she presented to the kids, and after school, she held a poetry writing session, or workshop for our staff and teachers, just to learn more creative ways to incorporate the poetry into their reading language arts instruction. That evening, we had great turnout for our family literacy night. Since I've been here, the base turnout we had for our literacy night, we had authors come in before, we had different activities, but we just had a great turnout. And the poetry piece, which is all connected, it actually connected back to a lot of our SOLOs, the work we were doing with our reading language arts instruction, we found some articles, and we shared as staff, just how poetry and how we use poetry to really boost some of the foundational skills, particularly with our younger students, with some of the rhyming and the different things that we do with reading language arts, the poetry tied in with that. So, the author visit, and part of the reason we chose her, had opportunity here, but her skills and her techniques that she had to pull was really matched with what we were doing throughout the year. Kids had an opportunity to write their own poems, oh, and I should know the four words, but she had given us four words that the kids had to use in a poem, you know, it was a requirement, had to have those four words in there somewhere, then we had poetry contests with the poems, and some of them just turned out great. I think that was part of the reason we chose her, a great turnout at the family literacy night, because the winners were announced that evening when she spoke with the parents, so that was very positive. Another highlight, we haven't talked a lot about it this year, but we did some work with local law enforcement and social services, and just developing it more consistent and procedures, just reviewing our attendance and our truancy at the elementary level. We don't have a huge issue with truancy or attendance, but there's enough there that we want to be consistent, we want our kids to get to school, because if they're in school, they're going to learn, plain and simple. But, as part of the process, in March, along with law enforcement and social services, we held meetings with parents addressing individual student concerns regarding school attendance. We approved our procedures as a school, and we recognize support from county officials, I think on both ends, from my end as a building principal, but I think even with the law enforcement and social services, we deal with a five-year-old or a six-year-old, and there's attendance issues, you know, those can be some tough conversations, and county doesn't always follow, follow up as well as we would like sometimes, but I think we've put a good system in place where we work with parents, but also have a plan, set expectations, and here's what's going to happen as an improvement, and we now have a better plan in place as to the next steps. And the parents that we did work with, we saw a dramatic improvement in attendance in the months ahead of May, we ended up paying with the school year, it really helped, so we're looking forward to having that, cover our belt to start the school year next year, so. We're not in having these truancy meetings, other districts are doing it, they just said we called truancy meetings, more, truancy review board meetings, but essentially it's with parents, school officials, law enforcement, and social services possibly involved, so we have people that are part of that, and at least we plan to meet either quarterly or each, at least have one of those meetings each trimester next year. One of the biggest area that, you know, we really struggle with at the elementary level, particularly at Black Earth, is kids being late in the morning, and we are not often the biggest issue, is they drop their older student off at the meeting in the morning, who's on time, and then they're late at Black Earth because of the 10-minute drive, and so, we do, we want to try to address that, try to improve that as well, but, you know, there's one area when it comes to attendance, particularly for young students, and I think the perception just simply is, oh, you know, they're just kids here, they're just first graders, it's okay, and it makes a big difference, and just somehow it can start today, so we want to continue to work in that area, but I think we make some good strides, you know, if you get a second half of the year, so we're, we're continuing to work on that. Also, just want to plug our PTO, as always, just we, you know, our wonderful relationship with our parents, we continue to sponsor the field trips, we hosted the traditional event again this year, Halloween night, Mayso Park Night, Party in the Park, they sponsor our author visits, so, you know, PTO, they're the ones that help us bring Judy Young in, and they sponsored that day, it's a pain for her to come, and as always, just all her efforts, working with parents, working with kids in the classroom, just, you know, even meals for teachers, when our teachers have the long days and they're, they're working even in their hour, PTO provides meals for them at daytime. Well, just finish up with, as I put together this report, just kind of looking at the year, and I didn't realize this until just the last couple of days, but also just incorporating the new staff at the elementary level. We had 12 new staff members at the elementary level this past school year, we had seven teachers, we had a guidance counselor, and we had four educational assistants, so that's a, that's a big chunk of, percentage of people that work at the elementary level, and it's a credit to veteran teachers, and just a credit to what we have in place, because our new staff members came in, they added something to the table, they were positive leaders, did a great job, so, on our end, I think that's something to celebrate as well, just, you know, all the people that come in, we just keep it going, so very excited about that. Looking ahead next year, PPISS will be up, you know, we've got to keep that going, keep improving that, reading and math curriculum, obviously, we have Edge Climber, just our, how we can use that, helping do things better, and then our teachers also will be working to build their own, build, building their own curriculum, trying to get our things that we pulled from clips years ago, making sure to do that where it needs to go, so. Any questions for me?
Good job.
Thank you.
I know it's hard when you got to bounce back and forth to new schools, but you do very well.
Yeah. Well, we all congratulate my staff too, because I'm associated with them at times, but, and, and for parents, you know, but, we do, and I think we can get better year in the adult, so. Starting year's end next year, so.
Cool.
We're on even.
Nice. Thank you. All right, people services, Vivian?
Well, good evening, everybody in class. I was going to sit even closer, but you're easily here, but. I titled my report, like, "A Year of Learning, Growth, and Change," okay? And the learning, you've heard some of the learning that's been going on with TeachGave and the educator effectiveness, and everything that went along with that, all the new assessments, there's just a lot to learn this year, and being new in a position, you know, and had never done this before, yeah, there is a lot to be learned. But I think my biggest learning experience had to do with procedural self-assessment. So this is the DPI assessment, for those of you that maybe don't know anything about it, or don't remember, but it's a year-long process, where we examine our past and our current compliance with all the state and federal laws, when it comes to, you know, the IP process and the paperwork and other things, because it's also looking at discipline, it's looking at, are we meeting the timelines for evaluations, you know, all that type of thing. Every district does this once every five years, you know, and so, you know, the five years, but I didn't expect it to be a year-long process, I thought it was kind of like a one-time event, you know, they just.
And we didn't tell her, we didn't tell her when or not, and.
Yeah, it's like, you do this audit, you know, look at all your stuff and see how you did, and it's done, but, no, it's like something else, every couple of months, it's something new. It also was a parent satisfaction survey, the post-high school outcomes survey, so like, the, the kids that graduated last year, Sue had to call each of them and talk about where they're at, you know, this year, what they did, you know, did they go to college, did they get a job right away, are they employed, are they not employed, that type of thing, you know, so it's a very comprehensive process, the whole self-assessment. The biggest part of it though, was the random sampling and evaluation on IP paperwork and procedures, reviewing all that kind of thing to see how, how we did. From that, we had to correct errors, there's certain errors that have to be corrected, and so my staff worked really hard at making sure that they did everything they needed to do to correct those errors. And then this coming, this summer actually, is hopefully kind of the last piece, where someone from the DPI will come in and they will pull some random samples of this year, you know, to make sure that you really kind of learned from, you know, the audit that we did in the fall, you know, that sampling. And so I'm looking forward to that, to see, hopefully, everything will be much better than it was when we did, you know, the first sampling in the fall. So one of the things I really focused on this year was trying to make sure that compliance is really working, so I did review every IP, you know, and so, the buck will stop here, you know, if I missed it, I missed it, but I'm hoping that, you know, I didn't. And also, and we had monthly people services and things, and at those meetings, a big focus of that was, you know, what are some common mistakes, what are the errors that I keep noticing that people are making, how can I clarify this misunderstanding and try and make us on the same page? You know, there's just, there's a lot of nuance when it comes to SpecEd, everything, the timelines, the laws, the, you know, the, the paperwork and doing it a certain way, and, you know, teachers that have been around for 10 years still have questions, and sometimes all get confused about it. What's kind of new in the works is something called results driven accountability, and this might be something that you see happening, RDA is how it's abbreviated, but the idea is that from the federal level down, that instead of just focusing on compliance in the future, that we want to really start looking at, are our special education students performing, you know, what are the results of the money and the time, the effort that we're putting into special education, is it actually helping kids achieve, you know, in reading and which arts and math? For, say, Wisconsin, they decided to make their first goal for reading achievement, and so over the next several years, that's kind of going to be a new piece added on to the compliance part, so we'll still have to look at compliance, but it's also our results, you know, our kids learning, you know, are we just good at paperwork, or are our kids actually benefiting from being in special education? You know, so that's a big thing coming. Another piece of learning, a lot of staff trainings this year, you know, that I'm proud to say that, you know, we provided, you know, to our staff. 12 staff members were trained in nonviolent presence intervention. The goal is from next year and on, that every special education teacher and educational assistant will be trained on a yearly basis in nonviolent presence intervention, and that's just, it's both a way to try to prevent things from escalating, and also how to deal with situations once they have become escalated, and how can we deal with them in kind of the quickest and obviously least violent way, you know, at least confrontational way, you know, as possible. The board also approved it, allows to have Kathy Van Loon, who is an autism and behavioral consultant, she came and she did three hours for educational assistance on one day, and then another three hours for the whole entire staff, and talked a little bit about, you know, how to prevent and deal with challenging behaviors, you know, that we sometimes see in our kids. She also spent some time just consulting on some individual students, but the trainings were for everyone, just to get a better, you know, sense of, you know, how we can kind of de-escalate how we can prevent things from happening. All the middle and high school SpecEd teachers attended a half-day training on post-secondary transition planning, and that was with a CISA representative, who's a, that's, he's a transition coach, and it was to help us kind of look more at what are our practices with trying to help kids transition from school to beyond, you know, looking at career plans and things like that. Our interventionists this year were training on the AIMS Web program, and this was a new program, it's a computer-based progress monitoring program, and what it allows, the reason that SpecEd is involved with it is because it is the program that can be used to determine whether kids are making enough progress, or whether they can qualify for specific learning disabilities, you know, so that the interventionists are using it for all of the kids that are kind of in their intervention programs, so they can track their progress and compare it to what is considered a standard rate of progress, you know, and for kids that aren't making gains fast enough at a standard rate, then those are the students that we would consider for learning disabilities, you know, and next year, I want to make sure that all the SpecEd staff also will be trained to use AIMS Web, because it will just be a wonderful thing that they get used to monitor their progress for IP goals, and it has, you know, reading, writing, and math components to it, you know, so it's a really excellent program. Three staff members attended, and you guys under-sponsored autism training this year, and several others attended, just a variety of different workshops, you know, so, I can't say that anyone that asked me to attend, you know, a conference or workshop in the special ed arena, you know, I, we were able to have the funding to do that, you know, and it's just, one of the benefits, I think, of the grant dollars that we do have for special ed, that it does allow, you know, money for the special ed training. Several of the people services staff took part in PPISS training, so with the elementary counselor, the elementary SpecEd teacher were, you know, a big part of the team for PPISS, you know, and then, like I said before, just navigating TeachGave with my teachers and, you know, going through the education, educator effectiveness process, you know, that, a lot of, a lot of times for professional growth and a lot of great conversations, you know, and I know, you know, I wouldn't have probably observed my new teachers at least five times, you know, in the, in the educator effectiveness model, you know, so I do think that that has helped, you know, with doing that. Okay, the growth part, we had a lot of growth of students in SpecEd. To give you some perspective on that, when I came last year, you know, which, and looked at the first numbers of what we thought we were going to have, you know, it was 70, 72 students, okay? By the time September 1st came, we had 12 kids transfer and five did transfer out, okay? But we started a year with 79 SpecEd students. Right now, at this moment, with our projections for next year, September 1st, it's going to be 87 students, you know? And part of that is that only three students graduated compared to, you know, our 10th and 11th grade numbers, not much better than that, but our 12th grade, it was only three students that graduated, you know, and just a mixture of transfers and additional evaluations, you know, and most of those are the little ones, you know, that have qualified for SpecEd, but a couple fifth graders qualified for SpecEd this year too, for the first time. So, that growth, you know, it's growing gains for all of us, you know, it's kind of what led to, you know, a need for more staffing, you know, both teachers and EAs as the years progressed. A lot, like Dale said, with this staff changes, you know, there's just been a lot of staff growth and change in special ed and people services this year. You know, for instance, Aubrey was new to SpecEd, just as a counselor, Emily, a new SpecEd teacher, Cara went from beginning intervention to a SpecEd teacher, so those were three new people with one new position out of that. So Cara's position last year was split between elementary and middle school, this coming year, she's going to be purely middle school, and then we'll be hiring, hopefully, tonight, the hire will be approved to have another full-time person. Throughout the year, Josie helped us out, she, there was a principal year point five FTE from second semester on, that Josie devoted time to special education to support students. For next year, you know, we're looking at adding 1.5 additional FTE, and that's all at the elementary level, and that's by making Becky Schultz be full-time in special education, because she's going to do early childhood math today, SpecEd the other half, and one new hire, if everything goes well tonight.
Yeah, Dequall, the new hire, what she's talking about is, we, we, those hires are in front of you, it's not additional.
Right, it's the ones that are in front of you tonight. And in addition to providing all the needed support that our students need, it does help to have, not, to no longer need to travel between the two schools, you know, so that's going to add a lot of support just by not having an elementary SpecEd person, you know, support between the two schools, so it will be very helpful, and I appreciate that you supported that. We have new EAs, Molly Paulson was new, Joyce Ruland was new to us this year, Joyce ended up increasing from a part-time to a full-time. Autumn Sobol is new to us, and she replaced Tracy Jones at Mayso halfway through the year. For the coming year, also hoping to hire an EA to support some students that are coming to high school next year, and that's also on your agenda for tonight. On the other hand, we sadly have to say goodbye to some, actually four staff members from my department, okay? Not all of them were, some of them are CISO employees instead of ours, but Amy Tumble, our nurse, that, you know, has left, Dan Perkins has taken new positions, so we will be having to look at replacing him with a new school psych. Jean Devine, who is our OT, and Amy Ryan, who are PT, both of them have taken positions in other, in other places, you know, and so they will all be greatly missed, and have a lot of growing gains for next year too, you know, and I'm confident that, you know, since the Bible's working together, that we can find some really good replacements. Looking ahead, there's another new state initiative on the horizon, it's called academic and career planning, I don't know if you've heard much about that yet, but beginning in the 2017-18 school year, legislation has said that every people enrolled in sixth to 12th grade needs to have an academic and career. an academic and career plan, plan anyways. You know, so over the next few years, over the next few years, that's what we'll be really kind of focusing on. So in addition to SpecEd things, to, you know, look at our people services model and at the counseling especially, you know, at middle and high school, and also just the other people that kind of lead into career guidance and, you know, other career activities that we do. So according to the law, okay, the DPI has to purchase and develop software that's going to be used statewide to provide, provide academic and career planning services to pupils. They are, they're also required to grant guidance, training, technical assistance to school districts and staff on how to implement some model academic standards. So a pilot is being started. We're not part of the first pilot for next year, but hopefully from that pilot, we will all learn some good things, so.
We did consider it.
We did consider it.
We talked amongst ourselves and said, thanks, we'll let somebody else pilot. It's kind of, yeah, we'd like to learn from others.
So anyway, so over the next, you know, school year, I plan to do a lot of meeting with the people that are currently involved in any kind of career aspect at middle and high school and start them training at heart, like a plan for how you're going to make sure that happens within the next few years. So that's my little speech for tonight. Any questions for me?
Yeah, how do you determine a sixth grader wants to be a NASA engineer or an astronaut or wow?
Most common is united rental salesman.
Well, I can understand that.
Most common is a professional football player.
Yeah. It's a big driving brand new white truck.
Yeah.
Do we have any ways, I know in the past I've talked to parents that have struggled with kids with dyslexia. Do we have an adequate testing, I know we had in the past, but adequate testing for all the different forms of dyslexia and a plan to assist with that?
Technically, dyslexia is not like a special ed disability category. That is a medical diagnosis, okay? So often though, a student that has dyslexia, you know, may be eligible under a living disabilities category depending on what their degree of disparity kind of is, you know, how far below average they are, you know. So I wouldn't say that we have, you know, like specific dyslexia, you know, things in place, you know, but a lot of the strategies that we use to, you know, help kids, you know, that have learning disabilities do, you know, why because of dyslexia, you know, but we are not allowed to diagnose dyslexia or actually, you know, and kind of use that terminology.
Tell me about that.
There is one, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, there's somewhere. All right, any other questions? Thank you. And thank the entire administrative staff for your guys' work this year. It helps us fundamentally, so thank you all. All right, personnel. Action to accept the resignation of Daniel Perkins as school site with thanks of service of 2007. Thank you. James and Kim. Discussion. Hearing none. James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. Emotion to hire Daniel Perkins as IT specialist for the starting hourly rate of $22. Thank you. Second? Thank you. Discussion.
This is, this is really interesting part. Is he full time then?
Yeah, it's an hourly position. It's an ABW position that's we run our IT at ABW.
Okay, but the other guy is still here.
Correct, it's the second position.
James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. Emotion to hire Cassandra Perkey as middle high school FIAE teacher with a starting annual salary of $34,043. Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. Emotion to hire Brianna Hubner as third grade teacher with a starting salary of $34,043. Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. Emotion to hire Alyssa Inbold as elementary cross-categorical teacher with a starting annual salary of $40,000. Thank you. Do I have a second? Discussion.
Here's experience.
I have critical error.
And experience.
So.
So many brains, I saw the evidence.
Maybe and I worked on this together, I just have to make up the, so that's a team effort, so I want to make sure she deserves to. She was heavily involved, and actually I was passed up during vacation, we were Texas and going to Florida.
James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. Emotion to hire Janice Doyle as a 1.0 FTE EA at the high school with a starting hourly rate of $1,374. Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. Emotion to amend the business official compensation for the 15-16 year to a salary of $75,000. Thank you. Do I have a second? Hearing none. James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. All right. 2015-16 compensation for district employees. Discuss possible action on co-curricular appointments for the 15-16 school year. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Discussion.
I don't know if this is the right form for soccer, probably we'll need one more coach. They have like forty-three possibly boys out for soccer?
Right, yeah, this isn't.
They're not the right form, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, and it's, you ask a good question. Yes, Rich and I have talked about it. There are, we have parameters. Our agreement is, once we hit a number, then we sit down and talk, and that's true about other sports. We've done it in the past. This is Rich's second year here, we'll talk about it again. So again, we'll, we'll address that when the numbers are confirmed.
I guess I could ask.
I don't have it in front of me, to be quite honest. You know, there, there's aspects related to a couple of things. One, and you, you hear speculation on our football program. What's the number? When will we know it's the number of the first day of practice? We'll prepare for that. It's also based on, and I'll use the example, this was a discussion two years ago with the girls' soccer team. And we started the year at twenty-six, but we had a number of students that haven't been out for several years. And so it's, it's a number, it's also skill, it's also needs, but the challenge that we have is, and we, we tried this in JV, in football. We thought, oh, you know, we'll run the varsity program and we'll have some JV games. Well, we've tried that in the past and we know that if we have programs that are interested or if students interested are part of the program, we, we're going to try freshmen this time based on that experience. And so you also have to look at the students that are out, I think. And then what's the need for them? Because in soccer, and again Bartlett would answer this better than Richard I, because Bartlett's our head coach and I, you know, talked to John Tommy. But what's the rotation? How many students, how many student athletes do you need? And for a varsity team as well as a JV team, and understanding that our JV program conference-wise plays before varsity. And so where you're looking at numbers per se, that, oh, you know, you, you have to take that into consideration when the games are also played. Because if you're crossing over and then just like, I know the basketball a little bit better, but you can play five quarters in a night. And there's X number of minutes in a year for a soccer player. And so you also, you can't have, sometimes people think, well, you only need eleven to play, okay, so what's the rotation? And again, each coach has a different perspective on that, but then how are the athletes going to play? And that's why it's a range and it's not a number. It's taking it a long way to get to that point. And, you know, we'll look at it each time, but the, the promise is we'll sit down and talk. And if we have experts or resources, then we'll go from there, you know. Believe it or not, I'm fortunate in the soccer world, her, the account manager for Train used to be the Benona girl, the girls' head soccer coach. And then won a couple of titles and whatnot. So we were fortunate that we had someone to talk to in terms of what does the range look like? The harder question, quite honestly, is when do you have a full JV program compared to when do you have three programs? That, that's a more challenging thing, but our commitment, just as what we've done with varsity reserves with juniors and seniors, based on what our students can most benefit on, we'll provide programming accordingly for those students of the program.
Yeah, I was thinking more about safety. With a lot of kids.
Well, say, actually be the opposite, to be honest. Safety in numbers, if you're, you're splitting two, twenty-two and a half, they can scrimmage one-on-one, so that, that isn't as much of a safety issue. It's actually the opposite when you get teams that are too small than if it's safety in the competitions, like practice being different. Well, the practice, there's two different, different measurements there. You know, supervision at twenty-two, you know, you, you just look at what are the athletes doing? It'd be similar to, I'll use a track analogy. You know, we're mandated to have a pole vault coach, a designated person for a pole vault coach. Currently, there's no other sport that has that type of designation. However, you know, in certain sports, you have to understand what they're doing. We struggled with a little bit based on softball and baseball numbers in the past. We wanted someone to work with pitchers, we wanted someone to work with hitters. That's why we've gone with two people. So the question is, what's occurring at, at practice? And what's the structure? And it, it's a conversation, you know, I think we get, if you, if you say there's this number, then you're tied into a situation artificially as opposed to understanding what's the best way to support our team. And that's, that's the promise. But it, so it's a good question and that's, those are the conversations we've had.
All right, any other questions about that? Hearing none. James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. Finance. Discuss possible action to increase breakfast and lunch prices in the 15-16 year, school year by ten cents. Thank you. Thank you. Ten cents doesn't bother me.
Dollar ten?
Dollar ten, yeah. We got issues.
No, this is our recommendation, just because we'd rather do a little bit here, a little bit here than have to wait two or three years and then we got to stick it with an hour or thirty-five.
See, and that makes more sense to me to do a little increase every year than to bang somebody all at once. James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action on notice of change in adopted budget for the 14-15 year. Do I have a second? Thank you.
Did you want me to say something?
Yeah.
You're probably going to be like, are you going to?
Well, I didn't know. If you don't want to, you don't have to.
I included basically why, why it needs to happen. I was just reviewing kind of past practices and talking with other colleagues and seeing what we should be doing and we need to be making adjustments based on appropriations as they happen. And I think a really important point that DPI makes on their website is that when we set the budget in October, that's really a snapshot in time of, you know, what we hope or think is going to happen. And unfortunately, that doesn't always happen throughout the year. You know, we had additional staffing that we needed, capital projects that came up, so allocation of funds is just, um, need to be reapportioned and so that's what I was bringing to you to make sure that we did it before the end of the year as needed.
So is there a chance it could change again? Like a few more weeks or something like that?
My hope is not. My hope is that I was able to project as best I could with where we're coming in at. I mean, I don't, and, you know, I don't know if that's where our final number is in the year, obviously that's just a budget number of where we think our expenditures are going to be. You know, I can't tell you right now if that's specifically where we're going to come at to the penny, obviously. But based on the, the two-digit functions, I believe that those areas should come in within those ranges based on what I'm projecting. But we still have six days left, business days left until the end of the year. We still have six days left, so, you know, kind of, kind of see where our project, our big projects fall in in the next few days and how much work they are going to be able to get done to bill us for is kind of where we're going to fall. But I feel that I try to give my best effort of projecting as best I could of where I think we're going to be at, so I don't anticipate changes, but you never know.
This is something new for us. Some districts do it twice a year, kind of mid-year and at the end of the year. It is, I'll just do it once. But, you know, as things come up, we'll talk to you and that's why it's, I want to just inform you what are, what are the adjustments or if you had specific questions about a certain area. A lot of it is related to capital projects and some of the things you've approved, which we appreciate. And just have made adjustments based on like what Aaron said, some stuff couldn't get done, we're hoping to get it done, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve youth options application. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Isaiah and James. James. Cindy. Kim. Isaiah. And I'll vote yes as well. All right, future meetings.
Policy on the 13th, six o'clock.
I anticipate kind of a full meeting on the 13th.
Quite isolated, the 27th is going to be full too. I've already, my whiteboard's already full.
Is it? Okay. All right. Probably have some exec decisions after one or both.
I anticipate both right now based on the conversation with Vivian today.
Okay. And James has asked that we put first student on the agenda. And we talked about it and I think I'll put it on the 27th just to, because I think that'll be the lighter. You want? Okay, well, can we, do we have everyone on the 13th?
Or I would, I can look.
We can, August, this, the first one of August? Or do you want it first one?
We can look on the 11th.
If it's not too packed on us 13th, we'll put it on. Otherwise, we'll put it on the first one. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All those in favor, aye.